Austin? Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. I now call to order the special session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Colianis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Here.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Here.
Commissioner Banther?
Here.
As a reminder, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to get additional public input regarding the fiscal 2025-2026 budget. Item number one, Resolution 2025-54, tentatively adopting the millage rate for tax year 2025-2026. Mr. Herring will review procedures required by state law, and then the city clerk will read the resolution in its entirety. Mr. Herring?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Ron Herring, Finance Director. The Florida Statute 200.065 sets the procedures for the adoption of the millage rate and budget. The tentative millage rate must be approved before the tentative budget. The tentative millage rate for tax year 2025 is 5.37, the same as the previous year. The tentative millage rate of 5.37 is 4.08% above the rollback rate of 5.1594. The rollback rate is a rate that would provide the same dollar amount of revenues as the previous year. The increase over the rollback rate is being used to fund personnel and operating costs, and that is a required discussion on the tentative millage rate.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk?
Resolution 2025-54, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, tentatively adopting the millage rate for tax year 2025, whereas a public hearing was held on September 3rd, 2025 at 6:30 PM to adopt a tentative millage rate, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, that, one, the ad valorem millage rate for tax year 2025 of the City of Tarpon Springs is hereby tentatively established at 5.3700, a 4.08% increase over the rollback rate of 5.1594. Two, the city staff is hereby directed to notify all pertinent governmental agencies of the provisions hereof as required by law, and that is the reading of Resolution 2025-54 in its entirety.
Thank you very much. Are there any public comments regarding the millage rate? Okay, hearing none?
No.
Oh, there is one? Okay, I'm sorry.
This is Sue Swenson, 327 Manatee Lane. I will first admit I am not knowledgeable about what the rollback rate is, but I had always thought what I had heard previously is that our millage rate was not going to increase. And so one of my questions is if the millage rate is really not increasing, and we know that we have a lot of properties for sale in our city, how are we going to be able to ensure we're going to be able to pay what we need to do if we pursue and continue with this large bond ahead of us? That's it.
Thank you. Any other comments regarding the millage rate? Okay. There's somebody? Oh, I'm sorry, Zoom? Anybody on Zoom?
No, sir, there is no one on Zoom.
All right, thank you. Let's come back to the chair. We'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Are there any commission comments?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
Ron, as we talk about the millage rate, .01 is what, considered a hundredth of a point? .01? What would that equal towards taxable value for the City of Tarpon Springs?
Like 5.37 to 5.38. If I remember right, it's approximately $29,000.
.01?
Yes.
And that divided by 10,000 homes, let's say, $2.9 per household or so?
I'd like to check those calculations.
So .10 would equal what exactly?
Overall?
Yes.
The 29,000 of revenue to the city, 29,000, 30,000 of revenue, additional revenue to the city, if you went from 5.37 to 5.38.
Okay. So that's about 300,000 if we went up .10. So, okay. Ma'am, how we're actually paying for this loan in which our, you know, our board members refuse to even have a healthy, tough conversation is they're passing it on to us, the residents, through the water and sewer rate increases and the stormwater rate increase. When you go to do those numbers and you stretch it out, you'll see that it's actually the residents who are paying back a big, vast majority of this loan. And so one of the issues I have with this loan is, which we're going to get the internal auditor to get on top of it at this point, is there's money that's being freed up from this 19.3 million. Well, I want a nice, itemized list, project for project, what is being freed up? Because what you guys are claiming is being borrowed is not being borrowed towards some of those projects. And there's a lot of money now that's gone to the Water Department to the tune of six and a half, seven million dollars that's helped freed up other capital improvement projects inside the Water Department. So I want an itemized list of what all that money is because we're borrowing 19.3 million. Well, technically, depending on if we actually use all that money, it's close to 38.6 million of dollars we need to account for. So that's what we need to account, and I'm going to have that as a consent agenda item for our internal auditor to look at, not just what the mayor wanted to look at for the 19.3, but everything else that's been opened up. Because at the end of the day, those numbers reflect that, is actually the residents, over the course of 10 years, are going to be paying over $10 million towards the principal of this note. Because why? Because we couldn't balance the budget. What we're supposed to do is do capital improvement projects throughout the year and not raise your millage rate. So some of my colleagues want to say I was grasping at straws, but no, it's actually them grasping at your checkbook and your pocketbook and your actual living increase. And guess what? Those prices aren't going to go back down, are they? That $9 they're going to try to raise in your water and sewer rates, they're not going to go back down. So they're making you guys pay for the financing of this big, beautiful bill and the capital improvement list. Is that the policy in precedent we're going to set moving forward? So what are we going to do? We're going to charge, we're going to make the residents, each home, pay $1,000 over the course of 10 years to do your guys' projects. And that's the truth. And I dare anyone of you to have a challenging and, quite frankly, a tough conversation about it. You guys ignored it all, and that's what's exactly happening. So when it comes to actually doing good for the residents, this is a poor loan, it hasn't been thought out. And the reason why they put it at 10 years or less, so they can make us residents pay for it. Because if they were really good at doing this, they would have stretched it beyond the 10 years, let the residents vote on it, be educated about what the loan was about, and actually, when they have to increase, what they're actually going to ask you to increase your rates per month to pay for the difference. So that's what's happening. My fellow board members tried to stop me last time because they didn't want me to get redundive, but usually start off a sentence or two being redundant. So with all due respect, I'm very disappointed in this board, how you guys have misled and in fact deceived the residents on this payment and plan structure to pay this loan back. And that falls on the mayor and the city manager. So next week, when we have this water rate study, a lot of questions are going to be asked. We have wells, there was $3 million in PFOX money that got gifted to the Water Department. Where's that going? The $2.5 million to do the pipes, are we financing that? Where else is that $2.5 million going? So I have a lot of concerns about what this money's being borrowed for, why the residents have to pay nine extra dollars a month for it? And what are they exactly financing? The loan itself or the actual capital improvement projects inside the Water Department? Those are my comments. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Okay, no further comments. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. Item number two, Resolution 2025-55, tentatively adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2025 to 2026. Mr. Herring will review the procedures required by state law, then the city clerk will read the resolution by its entirety. Mr. Herring?
Yes, the tentative budget for fiscal year '26 for the City of Tarpon Springs is 117,953,639, an increase of $31,797,745. Over the adopted budget for fiscal year 2025, the majority of the increase is for capital project expenditures.
Okay. City Clerk?
Resolution 2025-55, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, tentatively adopting the budget for fiscal year 2025-2026, whereas a public hearing was held on September 3rd, 2025 at 6:30 PM to adopt a tentative budget, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, that, one, the City of Tarpon Springs annual budget for fiscal year 2025-2026 is hereby tentatively adopted. And number two, the city staff is hereby directed to notify all pertinent governmental agencies of the provisions hereof as required by law. That is the reading of Resolution 2025-55 in its entirety.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any public comments regarding the budget?
Peter Lax, 514 Ashland Avenue. Being that we only have three minutes at the last meeting, I didn't get a chance to go over this, but I'm pulling up the agenda packet from last week and the penny fund fiscal year '26-'28 page. I don't know if it's able to be pulled up, but my question and concern was y'all were talking about saving money or spending money and spending money, and there was something that wasn't even discussed. But if you look on that penny for thing, it's for, it's hard to read on a phone, '26, '27, and '28, and under the police line, 700,026, 800,028, 26, 27, 800,028, 900,000, 2.4 million in police vehicles. That's a lot of money, and we're always seem to be replacing police vehicles. Now, I'm going to show you something. I know you won't be able to see it that well. I can always email it or fax it to you. There, there's a photo I took at Winn-Dixie, six police cars at one time, and it's not uncommon in Tarpon to see this situation. Also, if you happen to drive down Lime Street to the post office, drove by there yesterday, there were at least eight or nine police cars parked there. Do we really need that many police cars? Are they not coming home and using the same car? Are they taking them home? I don't know. It just seems like that's a lot of money to be spending. And if you're talking about saving money, I would like to see, and I think y'all should want to see, an inventory of all the vehicles the city has and to go over them and see what is really necessary and what's not necessary. Secondly, I noticed on the, you don't have the plan up, but if you look under City Commission, the budget for last year was 45,000, which is the 8,013, or 12, I forget, eight or 13, I think it's 13, eight and 13. But this year, it says 61,500. So I'm wanting to know, did y'all finally decide to raise the salaries for the commissioners? Because it shows on the current budget, 61,000 and change versus the 45,000, and I figure it looks like maybe 2,000 more for the commissioners or 5,000, I don't know. But I didn't see a breakdown as to how that number came about. Otherwise, I know it's a tough job trying to balance priorities, and I do appreciate the vigorous debate that y'all can have over certain items to see what we can do to make our government as efficient as possible. I know our staff works hard to do that. They're always looking for ways to save us money, so I don't put it on them that they're the ones trying to jack up the costs. They're the ones trying to help save us the cost. So I give kudos to Ron and all the department heads who've worked very hard to try to save as much money for the city as possible under their operations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a public comment regarding the budget? Austin?
There are no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Let's, I'll come back to the dais, and the chair will entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Okay, are there any commission comments?
Yes, Mayor. I'm going to state it again, I am not supporting this year's budget. It is super inflated. We have not given the proper protocols to let our new city manager get a hold of himself in this budget, but this board also has gone all in and basically starting a precedent that we're going to borrow money for capital improvement projects, but we're going to keep raising your water and sewer rates, or we're going to raise your millage rate when we can come back to raise your water rates. And so it's disappointing because that's not a good plan, and it's not a sustainable plan. When you borrow 20 million, but yet you only crack one twentieth of a dent in the issues we have in Tarpon Springs, and now you have to make each household pay $1,000 out of their own pocket over the next 10 years so you guys can have your little lofty bill, it's embarrassing. Because now what are you going to do? We got, what are we going to charge? Each household $1,000 every time you want to do $20 million worth of capital improvement projects? Or we use that money to help do other projects, capital improvement inside the water fund, and then jack the rates up? So no, I don't support the bill. Time will tell here, I guess, what, three to seven years? But half y'all ain't going to even be around. So disappointed. I think it was a lack of preparation, a lack of actually looking at the budget, a lack of looking at the budget from each department between years four through 10. As you can see, they're clearly bled out. And unfortunately, your commission has set a very bad precedent on trying to do capital improvement projects but not really balancing the budget. And so in terms of, you know, our vice mayor was saying I was grasping at straws when he asked a question if we were raising the millage rate. No, we're not raising the millage rate really, but technically, we're raising it .10. That's, you know, that's a lot for each household per this year. That's $100 coming out their pocket extra. And so you may say what you want, but that ain't going down. Neither is that going to go away once these capital improvement projects are done and completed within three years or budget are accounted for. So this is a very bad move for our commission. We made this whole because we kept saying yes to projects in which we didn't have the guts to say no to, and some of our official leaders have to, you know, listen and hear the truth about how they push stuff, but they should have considered all the departments from within as they all represent. And so time will tell about this loan, but for you guys to actually think you're doing a good thing by doing these capital improvement projects, putting another 4.3 million in interest on top of the residents, and then making them pay over 10 to 12 million over the next 10 years to actually pay off this loan is really just a disappointment. And until one of you can actually answer that, it's really a look on your guys' face, not mine, because you've just pushed it onto the residents, and that seems to be the case. But what, is each resident going to pay $5,000 out of their pockets to do $100 million worth of projects? And for the record, anybody up here, I could have asked Ron and staff to put $100 million loan paid back over 50 years, and then I could have called them up, he would have set everything up, and I could have asked them and peppered him with questions about yes. I also could have asked him or peppered them questions about the fact about how all these departments do get dried up over time, but I chose not to because I saw how this board was going. So with all due respect, this board is going to have to look back at themselves and say we couldn't balance the budget. We tried to say we were doing something good for the residents, but we deceivingly just passed on 55 to 60% of the bill right onto them, and that's not going away. So I stand firm, and I'm not supporting this budget. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have a comment. I don't want to get into a spitting match up here, but PK, you also approved the golf clubhouse, which is part of this, what we're paying for. They don't have $4.1 million just lying around. So you voted for that, and unless you could tell me how we're going to pay for that, I really don't understand why you're doing what you're doing. That's why I said grasping for straws. At the same time, the money that we'd be borrowing at 4%, Ron, how much would we be getting back while we put it in a special fund?
I believe you talked about our bank account, 4.4.
Correct. While we're not using the money, what would we be getting back if we're borrowing it at 4%?
4.46%.
So we'd be making money on the money without doing anything, correct? Okay. I know that, I have to be honest to explain to you as well, you know, we have infrastructure problems here in the city. We're over 120 some odd years of pipes that have not been replaced. One of the most expensive pipes in this town are the brick underneath the brick. And if you did look at what the city manager put out there was for us to go after, you know, some of the brick roads and get those up, which are the most expensive, because I know there's been somebody who paved over some of the brick roads in town, so we have issues with that as well. So that all has not been replaced. That needs to be replaced. It's an expensive process. You know, as I've said up here, it was my idea to bring the pipes in. I spoke to Tommy Keiger to give people a whole concept of what the inside of the pipes look like, because the outside of the pipes, everyone knows that it's round, but inside they're shot. And unless we get after that, we're going to have nothing but complaints. So most of the projects that we have in this upcoming are at least $4 million or more. Would you agree to that?
I'd like to see all the underlying projects, too.
Not on what I'm asking. All of the clubhouse is $4 million, and we have at least $3.5 million scheduled for infrastructure. So you're asking us to wait two years of $2 million and $2 million so we can afford one of the projects?
I was asking if you guys are going to charge the residents to pay for over 60% of this loan over the next 10 years. If you could have stretched it out, you wouldn't have been, you shouldn't, you wouldn't have been able to charge them that extra money because you actually wouldn't have been able to budget it right. But without their approval, this is what we're stuck with. So I'm not going back and forth to anybody. I agreed to the golf course, that's going to bring it, that was going to pay itself off anyways.
It's going to pay itself off down the road, but it has no money to do that now.
Has over $2 million sitting in there.
Okay, where's the other $2 million?
We had $3.5 million set to the side for the fire station, and then what was that?
This is why, the fire station was, as you stated, and I think you're mistaken, where you're saying that it was paid for. It was. People have houses that are paid for, and they take a home equity loan against it to pay for a new roof, to pay for solar. We're taking equivalent of a home equity loan out of something that's fully paid for, and we're utilizing it for infrastructure and for other things in town. The only part of this that I agree with you, okay, is that, yes, it should be defined to what we're using it for, because I don't want it as a sludge fund, I don't want it to just be used for anything. But that is a commitment that I ask to have as well, because I don't want to just frilly-nilly just, you know, borrow money and squander it. That was done in the past by prior boards as we spoke about. Okay, that was done back in, I don't want to mention the names and the years, but that was done where we put the money aside and it was squandered. That's not what this board wants to do. So I get a little bit offended when you sit there and say there's deceit and there's underhanded. Nothing was done up here deceitful or underhanded. We just have a difference of opinion whether we should borrow $2 million per year for 10 years or whether we should borrow the $20 million upfront and get the projects done right now and enjoy the next 10 years of the usefulness of the projects that we're spending. That's the whole thing in a nutshell. It's a difference of opinion of whether you want to spread this out over 10 years or whether you want to utilize it right now and enjoy that for the 10 years so that the residents could sit there and say this board went and took it upon themselves to go and do over and beyond what we've done in the past, which is squandering money. If we put it towards the project, the residents get the use of it. And I don't believe that just throwing that out there to the residents, I was wanting to ask you, if they do reject it, what are you going to do? Not do any of these projects for 10 years?
We're going to live within the damn budget. That's what we're going to do.
Well, that's nice to do, but I would prefer to give them better water service. I would prefer to give them better infrastructure. I know people in this room that ran on infrastructure and yet don't agree with you and don't agree with the infrastructure. So, I mean, you can play both sides of this, but that's all I have to say.
That was useful, back and forth. Commissioner DiDonato, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Banther?
No, sir.
Okay. Hearing no more comments, let's have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuyas?
No.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. That concludes a special session. Meeting adjourned 6:55 PM. We will now go to the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting. Do anybody need a break, or you want to go straight to it?
Let's keep going if we can. Well, I guess it's front of you to break.
All right. Okay. I now call to order the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Tarpon Springs on Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025 at 6:55 PM. Roll call, please.
Chair Colianis?
Here.
Vice Chair Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Here.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Here.
Commissioner Banther?
Here.
The purpose of tonight's meeting is to get additional public input regarding the fiscal year 2025-2026 CRA budget. Item, the item number one, Resolution 2025-01, tentatively adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2025-2026. Mr. Herring will review procedures required by state law, then the city clerk will read the resolution in its entirety. Mr. Herring?
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Mayor. The tentative CRA budget for fiscal year 2026 is $3,466,719, an increase of $2,453,016 over the adopted budget for fiscal year 2025. The increase is due to taxable values increasing 2.82% and the use of CRA funds to be put towards CRA capital projects. And that's my reading on the CRA resolution.
City Clerk?
Resolution 2025-01, a resolution of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, tentatively adopting the budget for fiscal year 2025-26, whereas a public hearing was held on September 3rd, 2025 at 6:30 PM to adopt a tentative budget, now therefore be resolved by the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida. That, Section 1, the Community Redevelopment Agency's annual budget for fiscal year 25-26 is hereby tentatively adopted. Section 2, the city staff is hereby directed to notify all pertinent governmental agencies of the provisions hereof as required by law. That is the reading of Resolution 2025-01 in its entirety.
Thank you very much. Are there any public comments regarding the CRA budget?
Peter Lax, 514 Ashland Avenue. I believe it could pertain to the CRA budget or the budget in general, but being that the downtown CRA area is probably some of the oldest area in the city, probably needing some of the most infrastructure needs that have been referred to. Something that was mentioned at the last meeting by Mr. Herring caught my ear. I spoke to him afterwards. I spoke to him afterwards, but I was surprised that there was no questioning or follow-up with his comment on this issue. That issue was that he mentioned, I think it was in 2005, the city had passed a referendum, what was it, for 18 million, Ron, that could be used for infrastructure. But he also said that was never used. So, technically, on the books, it appears you already have approval from the citizens to do infrastructure work. Now, if that had an expiration date, I don't know. I don't know all the legalities of that, how long a referendum is viable for, if it's not acted upon. You have Mr. Herring here. But if you've got $18 million already approved by the city and it hasn't been used and can still be used, and you can get 4%, I would say you need to take a look at that option. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments regarding the CRA budget? Austin?
There are no online comments.
Okay. Hearing no more public comments, let's come back to the dais. The chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, are there any commission comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Eisner?
Yes.
Chair Colianna?
Yes.
That concludes the agenda. We are adjourned at 6:59 PM.